I will call this. I will call this meeting of the Covington Planning Commission to order. It is six thirty P M on November eighteenth, twenty twenty one. Uh, let's see. Well, first we'll do the roll call. Uh, Vice Chair Ingram. Commissioner Fosgiord.
Here.
Commissioner Columber.
Here.
Commissioner Groff.
Here.
Commissioner Gilbert Smith.
Here.
And Commissioner Chelsea T.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't have your last name memorized yet. I only can go with what I have there. Um, let's see. Uh, that takes us to the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, Ryan, if you would be so kind as to present the flag, and if everyone else could mute, please. And I'll start when everyone's muted. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Ryan. Okay, and so that brings us to the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes that they would like to submit for the agenda? None? Okay, uh, hearing none, I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda for this evening's meetings, uh, excuse me, this evening's meeting. Um, all in favor, please raise your hands. Any opposed? No, okay, uh, the agenda has been approved. Uh, now on to the approval of the consent agenda. Does anybody have any changes to the consent agenda this evening that they would like to bring forth? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
And will we approve it?
Okay.
Seconded.
Alrighty, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, any opposed? Nope, okay. The consent agenda is approved. Uh, Ryan, do we have any members of the public in the audience this evening?
We, we do not.
Okay, then I will open and close this first, uh, excuse me, the first citizen comment period for this evening. And that will take us to new business. Um, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, there is no public hearing and recommendation tonight, so I should note that there is none of that. Uh, new business this evening is the Lake Point Development Agreement Amendment for twenty twenty one. Uh, with a presentation, this will include a presentation from Lake Point Covington Incorporated. Uh, Ryan, would you like to start us off this evening?
Yes, I would. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, Ryan Herrman, Planning Manager, City of Covington. Uh, this evening, we are bringing forth the, the revised and recommended amendment to the Lake Point uh, Development Agreement. Uh, these amendments have been worked on with staff and with Oak Point for uh, several years now, and we've, we've come to some, some great uh, conclusions in our negotiations, and I believe that we have come to an agreement on how to move forward with this development agreement. So bear with me while I attempt to share my screen. If my computer wants to cooperate. All right, how does that look?
Good.
Are my notes showing?
Indeed, they are.
My notes, my notes are showing?
No, just the, uh, just the, uh, PowerPoint, I'm sorry.
Excellent. So once again, Ryan Herrman, Planning Manager, City of Covington, uh, this evening, the Planning Commission will have a presentation from staff and Lake Point Covington, Inc., the master developer of the Lake Point Urban Village. The presentation is for discussion purposes only and no action is required or will be taken. The commission will simply hear a presentation from staff and the master developer, have an opportunity to ask questions of both the master developer and staff, and request further information to be provided to the commission at their upcoming public hearing. I'm having all kinds of fun here. So the Planning Commission will hear a presentation from staff this evening. Uh, the presentations, like I said, are for discussion. Uh, one thing to note is that none of what you hear this evening should come to a shock to you or a surprise because you've heard and reviewed everything before. We've come to you before to, uh, to do amendments to the Comprehensive Plan, which were adopted by council. It came to you for amendments to the Plan Action Ordinance, which were also adopted by council. And now we're coming to you to align those amendments in the Development Agreement, and we are doing this to make everything consistent. And we could have brought the Development Agreement, all three amendments to you at once, however, we decided to bring the Development Agreement to you last. So the groundwork or background for the amendments were laid out through the Comp Plan Amendments, P A O Updates, and the E I S that was issued earlier this year. So kind of give you a brief understanding of what a Development Agreement is. The Development Agreements are incredibly useful tools to ensure that a project can be built with confidence. The agreement sets standards and conditions that govern the development of the property. It provides certainty to a developer that their project will be isolated from the changes in the jurisdictional zoning laws over the course of the development. But it also contracts the developer to provide benefits to the city such as infrastructure improvements, public open space, monetary payments into funds such as fee and lieu in exchange for that certainty.
Hey, Ryan, sorry to interrupt, but I don't know if you wanted to go to the next slide. I'm still seeing the first slide. Is, am I the only one seeing that? I'm just seeing the Recommendation Public Hearing Review.
That's what I'm seeing.
Okay, I think that's where my notes are there, but I'll move them.
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to. I thought maybe you had another slide.
I have lots of slides. No, kidding. So as I was saying, uh, imagine, uh, if you would, the Lake Point Urban Village developing without a Development Agreement. What would, what would that look like? Well, you wouldn't really have the development develop inconsistency with the city rules and regulations. Uh, we wouldn't know how it was developed or when it was going to be developed. The reality is Lake Point could develop without the agreement, but chose to work with the city to come up with a voluntary agreement to shape our shared vision for the future. Development agreements are not new. In fact, they've been used successfully throughout the state in cities such as Isquell, Bonnie Lake, San Amish, and right here in Covington. These examples are proof that the process works. Uh, what happens when a city and developer can't come to an agreement? Well, an example of this would be looking at South Lake Union, which was a failed attempt to negotiate with a developer, uh, caused the area to be developed parcel by parcel with zero consistency, certainty, or assurances that at the end would be something that wasn't aligned with the community's vision. Instead, it became a hodgepodge of one-off developments with no consistency. So remember, a Development Agreement is literally a contract between a local jurisdiction and a property owner, or in this case, a developer and property owner. The Development Agreement contains obligations that both parties lays out for the various standards and conditions that will control the development of the subject property. Although the parties enter into the Development Agreement on a voluntary basis, once the agreement is signed, it becomes binding on all parties, as well as their successors and interests. So here's kind of a, a brief history of kind of where we've come through this whole process. It's been, it's been quite a journey over the years. You know, we started back in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen with the Gateway Study. Uh, problematic, excuse me, a programmatic planned action environmental impact statement, or E I S, and a planned action ordinance back early in the beginning. Twenty seventeen, the Development Agreement was approved. You know, you had zoning to map amendments, boundary line adjustments, C P A addendum. In two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty, uh, there was the text amendments to the Comprehensive Plan, which were the outcome of the Planned Action Ordinance Update, the Environmental Impact Statement earlier this year, and the stuff you have before you this evening. Also, there was an environmental evaluation, and like I said already, bad action ordinance. Uh, so in two thousand one, so far where we've been, we issued a draft E I S. Uh, we had a Planning Commission hearing, we had a city council hearing, the P A O was adopted, and we issued the final supplemental environmental impact statement. So here's kind of the outline of the Development Agreement Process. Uh, this is a legislative action that cities have available to them to do larger master plans uh, pursuant to C M C eighteen one one four dot zero four zero one. The Planning Commission shall make a recommendation to city council on the proposed Development Agreement related to legislative action. City Council shall hold a public hearing on the proposed Development Agreement, and if approved, shall authorize city manager to execute the Development Agreement on behalf of the city. A Development Agreement is used as part of this proposed plan as it gives certainty, flexibility, and flexibility to both parties and public governing the standards and quality of future development. Uh, like I said before, the terms of this are binding on all parties and successors, and, you know, the Planning Commission shall make a recommendation to city council, uh, after their public hearing on the second of December. So this is kind of a slide that shows you where we started and where we are now. Uh, we started with, like I said before, the subarea plan. Here's your beginning. And we've gone through all these different phases, and finally, we're here at the, the Development Agreement Amendment section. So we've gone through quite a large process, but we've learned a lot over these years, and we've learned a lot and negotiated with, with Oak Point in good faith and come up with some amendments. There's, there's amendments totaling six different sections within the Development Agreement. A updated legal description to the, the Lake Point Urban Village Subarea and four maps that are already exhibits within the Development Agreement. So remember that going forward. This is just updating six sections of that large Development Agreement that's already in place. So here's the general timeline. Uh, like I said before, it started in two thousand eighteen for this process. Two thousand twenty one, we went through the P A O update, E I S, and, you know, moved forward with more review of the Development Agreement. Uh, we are here on November eighteenth uh, for a Planning Commission meeting, uh, to review the proposed Development Agreement. December second, as mentioned before, is the scheduled Planning Commission Public Hearing and Recommendation to City Council. And on January twenty fifth, twenty twenty two, is the City Council Public Hearing and possible adoption. As I mentioned, here are the six sections that are being amended as proposed, or proposed amendments to this Development Agreement. The bottom you'll see is amendments to the exhibits. Now, in your memo and in your packet, you'll see the, the agreement as the addendum that's provided to you. You'll also see all the maps and everything in there. You'll also see an explanation of why the different exhibits for the maps were adjusted. For instance, this map right here is the Master Development Plan. On this, you'll see, you'll see little numbers there, one through seven. And if you look, I believe at Attachment Three, those numbers correlate with what's on the page there. So for instance, one is open space annotations are added, and that was a request by staff. Uh, number four was Covington Highlands Trail near the western boundary was rerouted to move outside the, the tree buffer area. Number six, two proposed spotlights were replaced with roundabouts as requested by city staff. So here's a look at the Master Circulation Plan. Uh, for instance, number three, the Highway eighteen trail reroute to cross the Covington Connector at one hundred ninety first place southeast roundabout. Previous alignment showed on Exhibit J did not account for the twenty-three foot vertical wall requirements for S R eighteen improvements. Uh, number seven, for instance, a proposed truck and bus route was moved slightly to the west as an anticipated driveway was eliminated. Here's the phasing map, or the phasing plan that's being proposed as an amendment to Exhibit L. Starting with number eight, divided phase one into two phases. So you'll see a phase one A, and you'll see a phase one B. Phase one A is a development application that is currently under review called Maple Hills Five. Number ten was adding the Covington Connector alignment to match the current design and master development plan. See, before, a lot of these maps were, uh, were concepts, and they, they grow over time, and as, as Oak Point learns what their development's going to be in the future, and as the city learns what it's going to be, um, we get smarter and we come up with different things to strategize together so the vision is, uh, secured. Uh, the last exhibit is the Master Trails Plan. And on this, uh, you'll see number three, the eighteen, Highway eighteen trail rerouted to cross Covington Connector, as mentioned. Uh, number four, the Covington Highlands Trail near the western body was rerouted to move outside the tree buffer. And number five, per request of King County Parks, the trail connections at Cedar Downs Park, the eastern cul-de-sac was eliminated, and a pocket, a pocket park was added in that location. So number five is within the Maple Hills Five project there. So let's talk about next steps. On December second, the Planning Commission will hold its required public hearing, deliberate, and make a recommendation to city council on the Lake Point Urban Village Development Agreement Amendments. Members of the public will have an opportunity to provide testimony and submit information for the record at the meeting. Subsequently, City of Covington Council will hold a public hearing tentatively scheduled for January twenty fifth, twenty twenty two, at which time they will hear the Planning Commission's recommendation, and members of the public again will be able to provide additional testimony and submit information for the record. The city council will then take action, uh, either at that meeting or possibly the subsequent meeting to grant final approval for the Lake Point Urban Village Development Agreement Amendments. So here is, uh, the planning-related information available on the website. If you go to Covingtonwall.gov slash Lake Point, uh, you'll scroll down, you know, they'll have a two thousand twenty one Development Agreement Update section that has all the documents there. Uh, that has the, the actual amended Development Agreement along with all the exhibits there. So that concludes the presentation from staff. So at this point, you'll be hearing a presentation for, by Nancy Rogers with Oak Point Communities, the master developer for the applicant Lake Point Covington, Inc., and the Lake Point Urban Village.
Great, thank you. Ryan, could you possibly put up the Master Development Plan?
I certainly can.
Thank you. Um, so again, as, as Ryan just explained, my name is Nancy Rogers. I'm a land use attorney with a law firm called Karen Cross and Hubbleman, and I've been representing Lake Point Covington, uh, on the Lake Point Project, uh, for years now. Um, I know that the Planning Commission is already very, very familiar with this project, uh, and Ryan has just given you a pretty detailed overview as well, so I'm going to keep my presentation as brief as possible. Um, obviously, you know, the site has long been a gravel mine, uh, and it is now planned and approved as an urban mixed-use development. Um, we're currently in the phase of building some of the new road infrastructure. You can see the Covington, if you're out there, you can see the Covington Connector, uh, is, is currently under construction. That's the major spine road that goes essentially east-west through the site. Um, where, how we got here in brief is that after the original approvals back in two thousand seventeen, we realized that we could increase the number of residential units and the amount of commercial square footage if we just added a story to some of the buildings. That allowed us to retain the exact same site plan, the same street layout, the same, basically the same everything, just provide a few more, some more units and some more commercial square footage. And so we made that proposal to city staff, and we did, as Ryan described, um, divide up, uh, the process, the various pieces. So the city's already completed its detailed environmental impact statement process. City's already completed and adopted, um, a new C P A Plan Action Ordinance and the necessary Comprehensive Plan Amendments, uh, for these changes. And where we're at right now is just this last piece, this last negotiated amendment to Development Agreement that's being presented to you tonight. Want to be clear that, um, all parts of the existing Development Agreement remain in effect, and sitting on my desk, which you can't see right now, is a, you know, two and a half, three-inch binder, uh, that contains the existing Development Agreement and all of its exhibits in glory. Um, all of that remains in effect. What's changing is just the following. We are adding, uh, public benefit, uh, in form of particularly as to how the City of Covington, uh, police force will grow uh, along with the growth, uh, that's coming with the Lake Point Project. Um, and that includes even some, uh, some payments as well as help, help in the new substation that would go in the Lake Point, uh, development area. The additional dwelling units and commercial square footage that are being allowed increase the total to one thousand seven hundred and fifty dwelling units and one million three hundred and twenty thousand square feet of commercial square footage. Um, the Development Agreement Amendment that you have in front of you has a number of small technical revisions that are needed merely to incorporate those changed numbers. There are also miscellaneous clarifications in the amendment. For example, that a structured parking garage that would serve a commercial use doesn't actually count against the commercial square footage number because that doesn't make any sense. It's just the parking garage to serve the use. It's not a use itself. And then finally, there are the updated exhibits that Ryan just watched through with you, and those have been updated to show the changes that have occurred since the original twenty seventeen, uh, Development Agreement. For example, on the, uh, site plan that's in front of you today, you see the Covington Connector with a traffic signal in the middle, but two roundabouts on either side of that, and those roundabouts originally started as traffic signals as well. So that's a change that we wanted to make to reflect reality as, as we move forward. Um, in short, it's actually a fairly short, simple, straightforward Development Agreement Amendment, uh, that implements the work of this commission in the past on the Comprehensive Plan and, uh, Planned Action Ordinance Amendments. There's going to be a public hearing on December second in front of you, the Planning Commission, and then eventually goes to council in January of twenty twenty two. And I'm here, as Ryan said, to answer any other questions you might have this evening. And oh, I should always make the pitch that we're asking, ultimately, when you get to your point where you're voting, which isn't tonight, that you vote to, uh, approve and proceed with the Development Agreement Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Um, so let's see, can everybody hear me? Because I'm not seeing my little box light up here. There we go. Okay. Um, so just to reiterate, uh, we're not taking any action tonight. Uh, we're not going to be advocating for any changes to this agreement. Our job is to either uh, suggest the council approve or not suggest the council approve, uh, this amendment as it is. So with that, uh, does anybody have any questions that they would like to ask? Please raise your hand. Uh, Commissioner Foster?
Um, on your seventeen hundred fifty residential units, can you break those down into single-family condo or apartment?
Not at this time, no.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Uh, looks like, uh, Vice Chair Ingram.
Yes, I have a question. You said that essentially one floor is being added to each structure. Is that a correct interpretation?
No, not to each structure. Um, across the site, there are multiple structures, uh, to which a floor could be added, and would it be expected to be added? But I can't tell you structure by structure which ones it would be.
Okay, I appreciate the clarification. So if we're adding additional housing, we're adding additional retail space, we're increasing the need for parking. Is the increase in also including an increase in the parking garage capacity, is it including an increase in open parking capacity? Uh, if you're having more residential units in there, more commercial trips, are you taking additional steps to mitigate the flow of traffic through the area with the increased traffic?
Yeah, and so the traffic issue, all those are actually two questions that I'll address separately. One, one is the parking, where does it go? Um, where on the prior site plan, we might have had a surface parking lot, we may now build a structured parking garage, so there are multiple levels instead of just the surface lot, or a structured parking garage, you know, as part of a building itself. Uh, it, there's plenty of flexible ways in order to provide the actual needed parking, and we will absolutely be complying with the city's parking requirements, uh, to assure that adequate parking is provided for commercial customers as well as, as well as, uh, residents who live there. Um, and then your questions about traffic flow, those were fully evaluated. Traffic was, I think, the biggest issue frankly, uh, that was evaluated in the Environmental Impact Statement, um, together with the, that came along, together with the Comprehensive Plan Amendments and Plant C P A Planned Action Ordinance Package that came through the Planning Commission. I'm losing track of time now. Was it last year? In any event, you did review all of that. It was fully analyzed, uh, to, at an excruciating level of detail, I might say.
I think, I think I might have misspoken. I guess what I'm asking is, I know we've already dealt with the traffic impacts in this surrounding area. If you're adding trips and residents to the area you're developing, are you doing anything there to increase the capacity inside the area is what I'm getting at?
Oh, I see. So that's part, that was actually part of the, the traffic analysis is, is it, you, you look at where the trips generated inside the, the, the development are also going. And, and there's a, we're talking about internal capture rates and that kind of thing, where people go to multiple stores, they park once, and then they go to multiple different places, and then they go home. It's, it definitely was part of that, that environmental impact statement analysis.
Okay, I do have one more question, but I will see if anybody else has a question first.
I think Commissioner Columber had his hand up.
Uh, yes, could you, uh, say something more about the changes in the agreement about, uh, funding, uh, police officers for the anticipated growth and the substation you mentioned?
Sure, so that's in, uh, section six of the agreement, and let me just skip to that page here. So what we were able to negotiate, um, is a payment to help alleviate, um, one of the issues that, that we were hearing from the city and from the, then police chief was a concern about how long it takes to bring on a new officer. There's a long training period, uh, and that costs money, and, uh, so what in section six point one point one is included in this agreement is that the master developer will pay for one hundred percent of the recruiting, hiring, and training costs of four new entry-level police officers. And what that is equal to is equal to nine months of the annual cost for that new officer, so seventy-five percent of their annual, uh, cost to the city. And those payments of officer training costs are going to be made to the city at four different points in time. The first point in time is at the time of building permit issuance for commercial development at six hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet. The next point is at nine hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet. The next point is at nine hundred and twenty five thousand square feet. The third payment is at one million seventy five thousand square feet. And the fourth payment comes at one million three hundred and twenty thousand square feet. So clearly triggered defined costs being paid by the developer to the city to fund those training costs. And then you'd also, sorry, I almost forgot, you'd asked about the substation. The existing development agreement discussed discussed the substation and what is added here is a requirement to work with the Covington Police Department with the on the final location, design, size and features, and to locate that within the RCMU zone area of the site in order to coordinate adequate policing of the site consistent with, again, the existing development agreement terms that already have provisions for that substation.
That negotiation will just be with the City of Covington Police Department?
Correct. Which is, as you, you're currently contracted with King County Sheriff's Office, but you have those, those people are your people, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? If not, we'll go back to, oh, oh, Commissioner Growth. Or all my screen keeps switching around, so. Commissioner Growth, please go ahead.
Yeah, I think your answer for the last part helped alleviate some of my concern. But I would like to ask if there's any specific performance for the commercial to be put in in relation to the residential. Looking at the term of this, it goes for fifteen years, but automatic extension to five more years if you put in four hundred and twenty five thousand square feet. But the minimum is sixty eight, six hundred and eighty thousand. The maximum number went up. But so did the maximum number of residential. So there is no performance for how many residential, like how they go up together. So if this is viewed, phase one looks like there's some commercial being added. So great. The developer comes in, looks at this as a commercial development, putting that in, add some homes to help fuel that commercial development. So that sounds great that all of the police payments are tied to commercial square footage numbers. But if in fifteen years, there's four hundred and twenty five thousand square feet of commercial, new developer comes in, this gets extended, they decide this is a residential development, what is the specific performance clause to require that additional commercial to actually be filled out? It doesn't look like there's any tie to the allowance of the additional two hundred and fifty residential units and the increase in commercial development. That that appears to be really viewed towards this current developer. But this agreement running with the land, how do we tie performance so those numbers get increased together over time?
So that's actually, that's a really, really good question. So and this is again, you were on the commission when we did that, when you ran through the the comprehensive plan and talked about the environmental impact statement, I believe. And so the issue there and the way this is going to work is that we have a traffic cap number. And we were able to increase the amount of development, but stay within that traffic cap. Do you remember those discussions that we had? And the reason that we can do that is all about a magic of the having the right mix of uses come in together. If we do way too much of one thing, we'll hit the traffic cap. So we have to do a mix of uses in order to in order to be able to do the maximum development, we have to do a mix of uses over time. And that's how you are, you as a citizen and a planning commissioner are assured that both things are going to be happening. Because it would be, I guess I would just say foolish for a developer to give up the right to build out to the full cap by just doing all of one thing or all of one type of thing, I guess I'm saying, and using up all of their, all of their traffic capacity rather than finding a way to maximize it. Does that make sense?
Yes, but it generates a different question. That traffic capacity, you're talking about peak hour traffic or total system traffic? Like, what is the number based off of? There's a different rate between a commercial trip generation model versus a residential trip generation model. So you could still develop all of the residential without having to float the commercial. Plus, there's a difference between Commissioner Fosstrard's question of if it's single family trip generation model versus condominium. So there are myriad of ways to manipulate those trip numbers. But I guess, again, hearing you say that this is all tied to the commercial, great. I live next to this. My neighborhood wants commercial. We would support the additional people that come with this, but we know this is going to grow. What's the performance for the commercial tying it to trips? I understand that. But that doesn't it doesn't satisfy the the way to manipulate how you achieve those numbers.
I'm not. So you had asked initially, I would say it is a PMP car trip. Because that's when the most traffic is generated for all of those uses, whether it's commercial or residential. And I I'm not sure how else to provide you the certainty that you're seeking. I mean, it really is an integrated mixed use development. That's the point. That's the way it was designed. That's the way it's structured. And again, the only way that we can take advantage of the maximum capacity that is being allowed here is to make sure that we balance those trips.
Can I continue? If with that in mind, is there a way, I mean, would you be amenable as you know, dealing with the EIS, I understand we pre-clear the trips. Great, that's how that works. Going in the code, again, maximum trips, we look at PMP hours. But for this agreement, there is an opportunity then. If if you're willing to say we're going to build it this way, would you be amenable to adding that kind of specific performance to the contract? So that the city is assured for the next twenty years. Heavens forbid, anything happened to your development, we get into some other change of ownership. The city still knows part of what we're getting is that same performance.
We had negotiated those issues. I think Selena had something to say.
Thank you, Nancy. I just want to jump in. I'm just kind of kind of track along. I I understand what Commissioner Growth is saying. I'm curious though, and I'm trying to bring this up really quickly because this was a little bit about side of the scope of the amendments we really spent a lot of time looking at, is exhibit S in the in the development agreement. Does that speak to that, Nancy? I'm unable, like, it's not working for me to bring it up. But as someone in my past life, when I was here previously, I was part of that initial team that looked at that transportation evaluation. And and part of, we were also equally concerned with that. I will tell you that, you know, we've seen that happen, right? Like, if we if we look at other master plan developers in the region, that's that's what happened. Are they coming in like, oh, we want to trade out, we want to trade out a bunch of residential for some commercial or some commercial for residential. And then it feels a little sleight of hand, right? And so, and I think that there's been lessons learned from other jurisdictions on how they handled that and how they got around that. And because of the modeling that we use, Nancy kind of touched on it a little bit, is that it has to be, in order for them to maximize their trips to really get what they want out here, they have to rely on a balance of commercial and residential because they are utilizing that internal trip rate model. So getting back to looking at, again, I live here. I'm not really going to create a trip if I walk over to the store. But if I go there and I park my car and then I go shopping and I go see a movie and I go walk around the, you know, the area, then that's that internal trip capture rate is really what is driving their ability to get that max capacity that they have. I don't know if that helps, but that that's kind of the crux of this versus a standard project where we would say you have twelve homes, they create twelve tweet, twelve PM trips, you don't get any discount for that, right? Or a commercial like Costco comes in and says you generate two hundred PM peak trips and you mitigate for that two hundred PM peak trips. This becomes kind of a hybrid of how we look at that mitigation and how they they begin to offset and play with each other. I don't know if I just created more confusion if that was helpful, Nancy. I don't know if exhibit S helps clarify that anymore.
I mean, exhibit S is the list, S as in Sierra or Selena. I should say, is the list of transportation projects, city transportation projects that are required to be built over time.
I was trying to go off the memory because I don't know if we captured that. But to your point, that internal trip is based on the model that we're using initially for the project.
Yes, yeah, yeah. I don't know. I guess I should ask Commissioner Growth if that answered his questions.
Sure, and well, it's growth, but just to clarify with that additional information, that exacerbates the concern if you're not captured, if the if the internal trip isn't counting to the network PMP trip hours, then you can add even more residential before you hit the the number with the commercial because of the residential point nine nine generation and the ITPMP hour generation. That's not added to the point six of this commercial activity outside of that network. So you still can have, again, your phase two in that exhibit shows that you want to do commercial. Fantastic, appreciate that. We want that. Get that connector, get the commercial. That's the first thing the community wants. But going out sixteen years from now, really what I'm asking is if we're talking about the ability for this developer to say, we want to maximize that, instead of verbalizing it, can we put that in the contract to say, here's how we intend to deliver the residential, the commercial, the mix of this as the whole thing develops? And to support that, heaven forbid, this company because it goes to the assessors and the signs as well. Therefore, there could be an entirely new vision coming in in year eight that says something different, and there is no specific performance for them to do those levels simultaneously. Especially as Selena mentioned to us, because you're not putting those network numbers in and it's an internal capture. That's the concern, but I'd be happy if you're willing to to just add that to the negotiated contract. There'd be no need to put it in the EIS or the development regulations. It's really just that contract.
Yeah, unfortunately, we can't put that kind of tie in. And this was an issue that was negotiated for probably about a year with the city attorney and city staff and Oak Point. And the type, the nature and types of ties that were being proposed just don't work from a commercial financing standpoint for a project like this. And we really do, I mean, I hate to say trust me, but I'm a trustworthy person. But it, you know, really is about wanting to maximize the build out, take advantage of everything that's out there. It's a great site. It's in a great location. It's got people like you living nearby who really want the retail. We wouldn't be planning this kind of level of commercial if we didn't think there was a demand for commercial. And so it's that tied together with the fact that we can't maximize and create the whole build out that we're getting an approval for, that we're frankly already approved for, unless we do carefully build things together so that we take advantage of the the traffic modeling and take advantage of the ability to get up to that full trip cap with a full complement of uses.
I appreciate the responses and the input, Chair. That's all my questions.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, Vice Chair Ingram? You're on mute.
Yes, I do have two more questions, and they are going to touch on the topic that Commissioner Columber touched on. First, King County Sheriff currently has a shortage of officers. The city council in its recent budget deliberations wants to add an officer. But King County Sheriff is already telling us that they are understaffed by a lot of officers. I don't remember the exact number, and that our share of those forced understaffings is one point six officers. And then in the end, if the King County Sheriff's Department shrinks further and or is unable to provide the additional officers that you've outlined, what what is the impact of this agreement on the police force for Covington? And what what is the impact? What what is, what are other mitigations are there? And that's really more of a question for Ryan and Selena than for Oak Point because, you know, they can provide the funding, but if there are no officers to be acquired, what's the point?
Did you want me to take that or Ryan, Selena?
I guess I'm just curious what the actual question is. Let me just see if I understood this, Commissioner Ingram, and then correct me if I'm not getting this back to you. Is the concern or the question that what happens if we we get to this point in this contract and there's no officers to come in and participate in in the fulfillment of of that action, of that requirement because of the current shortage, right? Like, we don't know what the future might look like.
We do not.
We do not, right? So it is a little, I mean, that is the, that is the beauty and the and the strengths and the weaknesses of development agreements, right? It provides us flexibility in the future. As we learn and get smarter, we can make changes in a collective voluntary way with the developer. But it also sometimes it sets us up at a moment of time right now when we want a future. We just don't know what that is. So I guess for me, the way that I would answer this from a staff level is that, and I'll let Nancy kind of counter this, she's got a different opinion, is that 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 requirement's there today, right? And as we start to chip away and get towards that need or that desire, then we'll face that issue when we come upon it. But there's a couple scenarios that could happen, right? We could be back here for an amendment as we get smarter, right? Or as development starts to come in and we see potential changes, we don't know, right? And so I think that we've got to start with something and then get smarter as we go. And then as through the agreement, we're able to check and adjust ourselves. Obviously, hand in hand with the developer to kind of determine what the right thing is to do out there regarding that public safety element.
Okay, my second question is on a related matter. I I know that there's supposed to be coordination on the incorporation of the police substation. But and I know that the MDA says that the police are paying a reduced rate for that. Is there a cap on the price for square foot that the police are going to have to pay? Or is that going to be adjusted with market rates? That is a question for Nancy.
Hang on just a second, let me see if I can find that section in the actual agreement. It's not be easier than hard copy.
And Nancy, did you have any comments on what Selena had to say?
You know, my only comment on what Selena said is I think she's absolutely right. I mean, we just don't, we don't know what the future holds as a human being, as a citizen of this region of our country. I certainly hope that we're in a different place by the time that we've built that many, that square footage in terms of having solid police forces and that kind of thing. But we'll deal with it. I will find a way. So the eighty percent market rental rates reduced rental rates will be applicable. And you had asked, is there a cap? I'm not seeing a cap on that, no. It's in eighty percent of the market.
Okay, I didn't recall one, but I wanted to double check. Thank you. Appreciate your answers. And Selena, and I appreciate that answer as well. And honestly, it's the only answer we can do, really. We don't know what the future holds. It's just cause for concern that King County is not, sheriff is not able to fully support us right now.
Okay, do any, does anyone else have any questions they would like or topics they would like to bring up?
I would like to say thank you. The presentation materials were clear and the answers were very clear and concise.
Agreed. Okay. Well, hearing no further questions, I believe that that concludes our discussion for this item for this evening, unless anyone disagrees. Okay. Well, thank you, Nancy. I appreciate your time with us this evening and for the presentation, also to Ryan. I appreciate the 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 lead in for the presentation. That was very helpful. And of course, Selena, thank you for your insight into what's going on. And with that, we'll move on. The next item on the agenda is old business. There is none. Following that is the attendance vote. I believe everybody was here last time and everyone is here this time, so I do not believe that we need an attendance vote. Ryan, do you agree?
I agree.
Okay. With that, we'll move to the second public comment period. Ryan, do we have any members of the public have joined us?
We do. We have an individual who has joined us by telephone. So if
Uh, we do, we have an individual who has joined us by telephone, so if that individual would like to address the planning commission, please press star nine to raise your hand. That is star nine to raise your hand.
And with that, I will note that the citizen comment period is to provide an opportunity for members of the audience to address the commission on items either not on the agenda or not listed as a public hearing. Uh, I will open this portion of the meeting and ask for a show of hands of those persons wishing to address the commission. When recognized, please approach the podium and give your name and city of residence and state the matter of your interest. If your interest is an agenda item, the chair may suggest, myself may suggest that your comments wait until that time. Uh, citizen comments are directed to the planning commission, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate. And citizen comments will be limited to four minutes uh for for citizen comments and four minutes for unfinished business. If you require more than the allotted time, your item will be placed on the next available agenda, which you may request through the city. And with that, does our citizen wish to speak?
Again, to speak, you would need to raise your hand via star nine on your phone. And to unmute yourself, you would have to hit star six.
Okay. Uh seeing no uh citizens wishing to uh speak, I will close the public comment period. And we will move on to our next item, which is comments and communications of staff and commissioners. So let's see, I guess uh tonight we'll start with Selena.
Hi, good evening, everyone, I have a couple things I just wanna put in front of you, first of all, I wanna thank all of you that met with me this week. Um, I had really great conversations with all of you, I'm excited to finish out and round out my conversations with the rest of the commission. Uh, I believe Monday and Tuesday. Um, and I've told each of you individually this, but I will share for the sake of the group. Um, I'm kind of taking some notes in our conversation, I'm not quite sure what I'm gonna do with those notes yet, other than I know that's gonna help inform us as staff on ways that we can always do better um before the planning commission. And then also some things that might inform what we might wanna think about in future work plans. Um, so I just appreciate your insight, um I I really do, I I I've really enjoyed it, it's kind of nice to to see all of you, and I do plan to do this once or twice a year, so. If you've got ideas that you come up with, make a list, we'll we'll make time to have those conversations. Um, the second thing that I wanna give you a heads up on is that the city council adopted a social media policy uh last last week at their um their city council meeting. I'm going to be coming back to you with just kind of a introduction to that policy. Um, and then uh we'll bring back our attorney in Q one, probably early January, mid-January, where we'll really dive into that. Um, I share that in my public comments because a handful of you asked me about that policy in our interviews this week, and I think it's important for me to close the loop on that. So more to come, we'll be talking about that next week. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ryan?
Uh, thank you commissioners for your questions this evening and for your attention during the presentations, it's wonderful to, you know, meet with all of you. And I'm looking forward to the public hearing on December second.
Great, Daphne?
I have no comments tonight, thank you.
Okay. Uh, well, let's see, then I will go with my customary clockwise. Uh, Commissioner Gilbert Smith, and I can only hope that all the little windows won't shuffle around again.
Okay, um. First, I wanna thank Selena for taking the time to meet with all of us, I just really think that's a great procedure, great way to start things out, and then all the presentations today were were really helpful and informative. Um, I have a question, so I know that we're meeting on December second, I'm wondering if we're planning to meet on December sixteenth? Okay, I see two shaking heads.
Yeah, we, oh, go ahead, Ryan.
That's usually the one we give you off for the holiday season, whatever holiday you celebrate, so that's typically that's our present to you.
Okay, I still many things, so I will now take it off my calendar, so thank you for the confirmation.
I I would just, I'm sorry, I would just add if there's anything that goes awry at our December second meeting, then maybe we need that December sixteenth meeting, but I don't anticipate that from from this team, so from this group.
Okay, well, thank you, Selena, I'll get off my calendar then until the second. Um, and then finally, I think the only other thing I'd say is just wanna wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving next week, I hope you all get to enjoy time with your friends and family.
Great, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Growth?
I I don't have any comments, thank you though.
Okay. Commissioner Thorne, and thank you for filling out the rest of the tea.
I'll have anything, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Columber?
Uh, nothing else, thank you very much.
Okay, Commissioner Foschard?
Um, I don't have anything. But happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Uh, Vice Chair Ingram?
Yes, as usual, thanks for the presentation and the well the well-prepared materials, really appreciate the thoroughness and attention to detail. Uh, second, I wanna remind everybody that uh totally not related to city, but the uh Rotary Club is doing a pet food drive on January fifteenth. Uh, right now, the plan is Safeway and Walmart. We're gonna fill storehouse up for you. Food bank customers also have pets and we wanna keep those pets with their families. And then thank, finally, I wanna say happy holidays, everyone, and enjoy the wonderful and varied fall weather that we get to have. And stay safe.
Great. Uh, well, I too would like to to thank uh Ryan and and Selena for all of their effort uh for this evening's meeting and Daphne as well. Uh, and also the no longer on the meeting Nancy Rogers for all the effort and all the great answers. And uh I'd also like to thank all the commissioners that had questions this evening, they were fantastic questions. Uh, and I'm really glad that uh we were able to bring those uh to discussion here. Uh, let's see, aside from that, uh Vice Chair Ingram has graciously uh offered to provide the update to the city council on Tuesday. Uh, and I have accepted that offer, thank you very much, Vice Chair Ingram. And uh, let's see, I'd like to wish everybody a great Thanksgiving as well, have a good time with your family and friends and whatever you're doing. And uh, I guess with that, I will close out the meeting and yes, Ryan, it is seven twenty-nine P M. As I adjourned this meeting of the Covington Planning Commission. Thank you all and have a good night. Bye-bye.